I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Damage, mind, give this to, sure, anyone with their heads, please?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank and praise you for the opportunity to gather together this evening to take care of the business of our city and represent our citizens the best we can. We pray that you watch over some families within our, our small community who have gone through some loss, have experienced some loss lately, that you can, you can give them strength and that you can support them in their, in their pains. We just pray that you watch over the activities we do this evening, that they may be pleasing to you and pleasing to those we represent. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right, the reading and approval of the minutes from May 6th, please.
The motion to forego the reading of the minutes and approve them as presented.
Motion by pillar.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor of the minute, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes approved. Approval of the agenda. Any additions, changes? The so moved. Motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by pillar, discussion. All in favor of approving this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Judiciary, the Judiciary's report. Go ahead, have a seat if you like.
Where's the camera? Yes. Thank you, folks. Okay, I'm gonna go through my report here, everybody's got a copy of it. So, I saw you guys last month, not a lot of construction starting yet. Expedition Estates is the first thing on the list, they were supposed to begin today. You know, resume some activities with sewer mains, water mains. Uh, kind of a tentative schedule that shows paving of the loop done in, um, later in June. There's not a schedule as of yet to do, um, what is it? Sorry, Monty, 11th Street?
11th.
11th Street, 11th down there. There's not a schedule to do that yet. That is the trunk main that leaves the subdivision, and there's still sewer issues on that block. But, that will need to be addressed. I just don't have the schedule of when they're going to do that yet. I think their priority at the moment is to get some pavement down on those blocks for the home building activities that are happening. I'm not concerned about it getting done, we have ultimate control as the city up there, but, uh, the work isn't as good just, just yet. Um, alley improvements. So, the alley behind Union Bank, um, contract's been awarded to Winkler. They plan to start that project in July. That's a concrete paving project. When that gets closer, we will have a pre-construction meeting and coordinate with those business owners. Um, citywide water main replacement project. All contracts have been awarded to Deco Supply Group. And, we've had the pre-construction meeting for that, I think some of you were involved in that. Um, the work is starting in June. Um, lift station control panel work. Um, that's the modification of the two sanitary sewer lift station control panels to add the, um, the communication devices. I don't have a schedule yet, um, from skills. I don't know if those material, often, a lot of these electrical components are a little ways out, but I'll have to ask them. You'll probably barely notice they're, that they're here. They'll probably just show up and install the equipment, and then there'll be a little programming that has to have, happen, which is a part of their contract. They'll coordinate with, is it Sweeney? Is Sweeney that has her? I can't remember. Anyways, they have to coordinate with the control supplier to integrate that so that it talks to the control or this GATA system here, and, uh, everybody gets the alarms.
In control.
In control, okay. In control. Um, sanitary sewer improvements, so this is one of the things that, um, we need to go through. About, I'll just kinda back up. You guys had your sanitary sewer system televised last fall, um, looking for problem areas. And there's the, there's a map on here that generally shows something like this, but, the system's been televised, there's about a dozen spot repairs. You get, we've kinda looked through those photos, the pages. So, the cost estimate to, is generally to dig up and fix spot repairs, and then install a cure and place liner inside the clay sewer mains, so that this stops happening. At the last meeting that I was here, um, we basically took this original opinion of cost, which was $2.9 million, there's still some unknowns. We went and looked in 85 sanitary sewer manholes in town, um, looking for, uh, we had assumed that 85 of them had to be rehabilitated, and that, that's not the case. Fewer of them, only 20 of the benches need to be reconstructed, and about 40, give or take, we, we kinda changed it to a lineal foot or a vertical foot of manhole, but about 40 of them need a liner, like you guys have done in the past, so it's about half. Yeah, a little less than half, which is a good thing. So, we were able to lower the cost estimate from 2.975, um, down to 2.65. So, that helps, just kinda dialed it in a little bit. And then what we did was, what's that moment? Sorry. So then we, then we went and, uh, basically looked at the, the map and the, the boundary. This is all kind of, um, looking like a special assessment type of project, that's kinda how cities do sewer usually. And, so, we worked on the boundary. So, there were some prop, from fringe properties here that, um, anyways, we, we spent some time with the committee and the staff and looked at some of these, these areas on the edges to determine if they, if we got everything captured or if we didn't. Um, and then we spent some time with the committee working on the, what a, what a special assessment would look like. You guys remember, we had put together just kind of a, a round number of what everybody would get, but, the kinda discussion was that probably wasn't close enough, um, in order to have some conversations with the public. So, we did two things. We went and looked at what areas within this big block area have already been done. So, there's a few spots where people have PVC, because they've already done a project to replace their lines, or maybe they are, um, a different, you know, for whatever reason, there's a little bit, little bit of PVC in, in those areas. So, we, we took the boundary, we've got all the parcels here, it's about 700 parcels, and we put together in that column K of what somebody's, you know, if you did a $2.65 million project and assessed it 30 years at 2% interest, what the assessments would look like. And, we did two things. Commercial or residential users that had maybe had their sewer done, you know, in localized spots, we gave them a half of an assessment. So, what that means is that, you get, you get eight inch, 10 inch, 12 inch sewer mains. There's trunk mains in here, there's spot repairs. Every time you go from an eight to a 10, or 10 to a 12, you basically double the capacity of a sewer main. So, we, we tried to just give you a pretty close estimate that we're doing this big part of town, and if it benefits everybody, and you've, you've got a couple of local spots where they've done their, we got small PVC line. Should they pay something? That's ultimately your decision, you're the city council, the special assessment committee's gonna have some input on that, but, we just said half. So, if there's a resident, pick on you, Casey, if there's a block that was done, we just estimated that those people would pay a, a half assessment. So, about $1,500 over a 30-year period, or about 70 bucks a year, is what, um, that would look like. So, these 700 users, oh, sorry, and then come, very large commercial users, like the hospital or, or places like that that generate 5, 10, 20, 50 times what a residential sewer does. Many cities, many funding agencies like to see you guys use equivalent dwelling units, which is called EDUs. And so, what they recommend is that you treat them equivalent to what a single-family user has. So, that would be, we use water usage in those places, that's data that Monty and the guys provided, but, so the yellow ones are assuming that those large users are getting larger assessments. And then the green ones, there's really not that many of these specialized ones, but, in order to really truly give people an idea of what special assessments would look like, we kinda had to go through this exercise. So, it's about 700 properties, and it shows how $2.65 million would get assessed. Your 10, sorry, let's go on through, $2.65 million, and then a 10% city buy-down, I guess what your policy is. Well, 750 for EDUs, that's treating every residential the same way. Everybody that's had their PVC done as a half, and then extremely large users differently. So, it's about $3,100 is what a, a special assessment would look like. It's a best guess, because until, you know, just, until you get something bid, we've got 200,000 construction contingencies in here. We're assuming a few extra spot repairs already, but, um, it's the best guess until you can get something bid. So, that's what, that was a, what was a part of our contract to do. The next steps is, um, if we're going to proceed with this, we should, this, I'm assuming it'll be improvement district type of project. So, we would then follow the, you know, the attorney's advice on creating an improvement district and the report and preparing plans and, it's at least three months of design bidding type of thing. So, if anything, this, like I've told you this before, the spot repairs could happen this fall, but, most likely this would be next year type of work. So, that's, that's the dialing in of the costs. And, I had to make some assumptions, you know, the, using the water usage for EDUs and then treating some people as halves, because they certainly benefit from getting the large trunk mains done, but, the argument is that they've already done some work in front of the places. That number could be 25%, it could be 75%. I think you guys have to, I don't know that it will, it mattered, well, it matters to some people, but you can debate it to death at this point, and it's most likely just, uh, the number's gonna change based on actual construction costs anyways.
Well, I, thanks for whatever help that put this together, because that does make it a lot. Before it was a dark board estimate, now at least we can have the dial down, we can get a little bit more accurate. That number, but, yeah.
I got a question on the map there. Even on the west side of town there, even if that lift station, I guess, doesn't work, I guess, won't it, then, won't it, then, I guess, gonna drain, drain, I guess, into the old part of town?
If it doesn't work?
Yeah.
On the elevation, if you didn't like in an emergency?
Yeah.
There's a lift station high, right?
So, I thought that, like, the west part of town, if that lift station, it might fail, there's a, there's like a tide or something, and it drains into like the main.
If, if that, it's just kind of an emergency, you're saying?
Yeah.
I believe that, that would make sense. So, you're saying, should they be paying for it?
Yeah. No, that's true, so that's, you know.
So, we drew this district because this is everything that gravities into this system. But, like, what you're saying, Casey, this, this area, if you were gonna do a sewer improvement district similarly to here, you know, the argument maybe would be that they would be their own district, and that if we have to pay for, if this lift station has to get replaced, that district probably should pay for it. But, that's, I don't know if I can say that, they're, I don't know. I don't know that I can say though, that they're benefiting from lining all the sewer mains over there. Maybe a little bit? I don't know. It's a good question, though. Would imagine that if, if that's an emergency overflow type of situation, there probably are some people that are getting their sewer backed up right at the area next to the lift station. So, it's definitely not, it's not good.
Yeah.
Right? And, there, there's a force main too that runs in that lift station. How far does it go? Does it go all the way out? So, when they have to replace that force main too, I wouldn't think that your neighborhood's gonna pay for that. I would think that the other district probably would be paying for it, because they're benefiting from it. But, it's just, it's not a, it's not a perfect science, how to do this stuff, but, yeah. Make two cents. So, um, action items is create the improvement district. I don't, you don't have anything, in front of you, nothing's prepared, but I would suggest that as, as, as next steps. And then, we're gonna keep on schedule for, if you wanna do some, if you wanna get these spot repairs done this fall, we should probably be doing this stuff in June.
So, do we need, what do we need to do that for the next, the next meeting, for this fall?
Basically, just have that district created, so you can do the resolution. Like you said, most of the reports have already been done as far as costs.
And that would be a motion for more engineering to establish the, the district?
Or, well.
We've drawn, we've drawn about.
Consultation with, yeah, there. And because it's water, it's sewer, it's a non-protest, I mean, it's sewer, so it's a non-protest. District.
So, you can, you gotta create the improvement district that'll come with more engineering's map and, and property description around it, something like this. And so, the improvement districts will include, well, that's basically improvement district, right? And, and then it's a, Engineer's Report basically shows the work that needs to be done, and then the cost, which would be this, and, um, there'd be, I think, a couple resolutions to deal with that. And, uh, then, yeah, like I said, like he said, the next part is, is the protest resolution necessity, which you just skipped.
No protest.
Yeah. And, direct the engineer to prepare plans, and, you want from there?
And Monty's, really, Monty's got the firm work, I mean, he, he can put together your resolutions. I'm speaking for Monty.
So, you can make a motion to move to the next steps of establishing the, the district?
Uh, you've alr, you've already made a motion to proceed with pursuing the project, so it's just gonna be a resolution at the next meeting to create the district and direct the engineer to do this, this work.
But somebody's gotta do something between now and then?
Yep.
Okay. Then everyone has to do anything at this point?
Right. That's a good step. Then I'll be here in June, we'll just have, bring, I'll have the legal description all prepared for you, so it's all good. You can technically change those boundaries afterwards, you can amend the improvement district. You don't like to, but you can amend them. Just did that mandate on the project. Um, okay, so the last thing, I'll just move on. Last thing that I have then is, a month ago, um, in April, we were talking about having asphalt, concrete, people in town, quality asphalt, we're doing the paving out at Expedition Estates. So, we went around town with, um, the street department guys. There's a list here on this page of, um, different areas that, uh, have different asphalt repair needs. You kinda look at this map, sorry, Monty, one page back on the map. Um, so I'll just kinda run through them. There's, there's a water main trench that sunk kind of in the southwest corner of town. You guys had a water main break, um, again, southeast part of town. There's a patch by the West River Telephone Building on Main Street. Um, there's a 15 by 20 asphalt patch. I can't really tell from this map very well. Kind of the southeast side of town, there's a spot over by the, the hospital. There's some asphalt leading into Senex, kinda where the driveway is. There's a asphalt patch by the school, the entrance to the middle school. And then there's two on the north side of town. One where some, it looks like some asphalt was overlaying, overhanging a gutter, and it, it broke off. And then there's a patch kind of at the entrance, it's kinda like a storm sewer manhole, up there in the top middle. So, I've got, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, about 10 patches. And we got a quote from Quality Asphalt to do that, you can kinda see their itemized quote here. $50,842.50. The mobilization's only $1,800 on this project.
I like that, Chris, but.
Yeah. What we did is we took measurements and engineering paper, drew them up in pictures, and sent them to Quality Asphalt to just quote you guys to, to do these spots. So, you can see their, um, their costs. Yeah, so, if you'd like to have them do it in June, so be it. If not, then that's fine too, but, we're gonna be here next month.
Which, which one of these is the one by Senex? Is that the 70-foot long one?
That is number 10.
90, 10 by 90.
10 foot by 90.
I, I, I think that's gotta be concrete. I think that's such a high traffic, high, you know, semi, semi, right, but semis are turning on that so hard, and then, the last two years alone, that has gone from a decent road to destroyed. I don't think asphalt's gonna last there. I don't know what you guys, your thoughts are, but I, I think we need to look at concrete in that, in that spot.
And I'll say too, that the road just south of Senex, that whole block, that's, that one's getting bad. Monty wants us to put together an estimated cost for redoing that whole road in concrete. The residential streets just aren't built to handle a bunch of truck traffic, so, you either have to build an asphalt section that's suitable for it, which would be like six inches of asphalt, over 12 inches of gravel, with some, you know, tough mat underneath of it, or a concrete street. Either, either would, either would be fine. But, our nor, typical city streets can't take that pounding, so.
What was the product we used up, the sunflower, where that concrete, that asphalt was so damn hard? Did we put an extra? Remember we had to cut through that stuff, it was so?
Was it cement stabilized base?
Yes, yeah.
Stabilized base.
Yep. When we do that.
Yeah, there was a powder that they put down.
Yep, so, it's really, it's really made for doing whole blocks at the time, because it's like a long train. So, if we're doing a patch or a small spot, I'd probably, it might be more effective to do like some crushed concrete, or some geogrid, or, or something else, but that, that's an option.
Well, I just think that's the regular replace or remove, and it's just not, it's not gonna last. Now, I see the truck truck lighting up, another, they come in right between the fire, fireball and, and the bison too, and coming that way, so it's, you're right, it's a whole block that needs to be, I, in my opinion, needs to be looked at, but.
I could either strike that one, oh, sorry, Casey.
Well, the two, you know, these guys are then, you know, it's low as two, you know?
Some, some are.
You know, that doesn't help anything at all.
Yeah, yeah.
I could strike that one and just leave it out, if you'd like me to. Or I could have them do a beefier section on that number 10, which would just raise the cost, but, most likely I just have them dig down deeper and just do a tougher section for, for that spot.
But you guys, well, you, you guys just thought something.
The rest of the road has to be done anyway, it might not make sense, but.
If I was making the decision, strike it, I want concrete, that's not my decision, but, I, that's, I just think it's gonna get destroyed quicker, quickly. Even if we do a stronger subbase and then asphalt on top, I just, it's not gonna last.
Well, and if you're doing that, uh, this here is just a 10-foot by 90-foot section. It's not the, the whole street or anything like that, it's, it's a spot repair. So, you're, you're only gonna beef up one, one portion of that.
Sure, yeah, and that's not gonna cut it, it's a Band-Aid.
But, you know, if we, if we strike it, then, then we have to do something moving forward for, for that area out there, and that's, yeah. Because otherwise, it's just gonna keep getting worse and worse. And we know the traffic's continuing to go through there. So, so do we, do we fix it with maybe a beefier thing for the short term, knowing that we should, uh, we should be directing more to take a look at that surrounding area there for a, a larger project? Because the trucks are just gonna keep going there.
You know, if I'm looking at this, you know, too, I mean, you know, hmm? You know, the cost right now, it's a, costing all that much, you know, really, let's say. And then, and then, I mean, like even if I'm gonna do, do, I guess, a street project there soon, you know? Just maybe, maybe, I mean, I guess, maybe then's the time, you know, that we do.
This'll buy us a little bit more time to, to put together a, a good plan. But if you don't do anything, I'm, I'm afraid it's just, it's just gonna get worse and worse.
So, what's this patch gonna cost us on number 10? I don't see a dollar for that.
No, it's not, I, I think it's hard for them to break it all down.
So, the 45,000?
Just say it's 10, yeah. And, yes. Yeah, because it's about 900 of the 53,000. 10, 12,000.
Is that what you guys wanna do? Go forward with the patch, then await until we do an improvement, which probably need to be next year or two? Most likely, I think.
So, is this gonna be all done in, like, June, is that what you're saying? You know, I'm just curious, the price of it, like, concrete, you know, I mean, I mean, it's gonna be huge.
I'm sure.
Probably not.
And then if you do, what are you doing?
You're gonna do way more.
300 feet, 400 feet, so.
It'll be four, five, six times more.
Yeah?
This is just asphalt, right? Because quality's coming to town, like, that's the whole reason I got this.
Okay, you guys are okay with leaving it as a patch for now and doing the main work later? I just don't wanna make a look at it, we just spent 10,000 a year ago, and now we're gonna tear it out and do it, do it again, that's all.
Well, you asked if we were gonna do it in a year, then I'm gonna say no, but, you know, no. That's when the next, I guess, uh, project's gonna be.
Right, you don't know.
No, but.
Okay.
I'm kinda thinking chip sealing in 2028, but, probably be some patching at that time too, but.
That road lasts till 28, I'll eat my shoe.
This is being recorded.
You just, you have to stop shoes.
Okay, well, if you guys want this done, I need a motion, and then we'll get them to do it during June, June.
And I, I guess I don't see spending extra money to make it thicker if it's something that, that we want to put onto the radar within the next couple of years here.
If I'm standing there and there's any reason to make it a little bit thicker during construction, we may just direct them to do that, right? But it, I'm just, I'll give John a little bit of discretion. If the pavement around it's thicker when we take it off, also be it, but I, I'm with you. Okay, but if we run into some soft base on it or under it or something, that we may have to monkey with it a little bit, but, okay.
We need a motion though.
Yep.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Local.
Weidrich, aye. Stern, aye. Pillar, aye. Orenhour.
Nope. Motion passed. All right, thank you, Jared, any further questions?
Just sit down for a little bit, so if he's gonna get just, you know.
Perfect.
Thanks, guys.
Back here. I requested citizens, we have local permit for North Stars Baseball.
Raffle, daily drives through the month of July, total price of seventy-five hundred dollars. And we do have another one at six B that was having.
Common threads, hookers.
Make a motion approval application.
Motion by Weidrich.
I'll second that.
Second by Pillar. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, thank you. All right, and it brings us down to reports. And water sewer.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Streets, cemetery, Jason's not here, but Dave, you didn't go to the streets report?
No, we're just going and, uh, gonna do some pre-drimming, permits.
Both, uh, street sweepers working?
Yes, yep. All of the ones are working, the new one's working, it's been in the shop for a couple warranty issues, but we've been getting it back.
Have they been pretty good about, since this warranty, you know, or are they trying to fight?
Not real punctual and out of the way, so.
Okay, good, thank you. Casey. Finest question.
So I don't have anything at this time.
All right. Dustin?
So on the forestry side, Dave got with me to look at a couple trees. One was at, uh, one on Main Street by Jensen's Jewelry, that little triangular piece, to really heaving up the sidewalks. Like, it, the sidewalks moved on.
Yeah, almost need cones there.
It's getting bad, so it sounds like they are gonna move it. Dave feels like they can do it themselves, except for the tree. But I think we should also look at replacing the sidewalk before somebody trips on it and hurts themselves. The other one is right by IBW's Union Hall there. It's a pear tree. He's also gonna remove that tree by the sounds of it, too.
The one, the furthest tree on the west ended up.
Correct, yeah. They want it gone, sounds like they've been after Dave for a while about getting.
They're just starting to lift the sidewalk over by IBW, and they'd like to get it out of there before it listed to the point where the sidewalk cuts through the trees.
So are you guys entertaining the idea of a different variety of planting to go in there that goes roots down versus horizontal?
In there, I don't know if you'll find one, to be honest, because it's got, what, like, three foot by three foot hole to get water, and that's it. Everything's concrete or asphalt around there. So it, I mean, I'm sure they started for water, but, you know, if you wanna ask the state foresters next time you see them, maybe there's something that could be planted in there, some kind of, you know, shirter shrub, you know.
Well, I know, I know in the corner by Jensen's Jewelry, we've talked numerous times about, and a couple times in this room too, but with, um, CBB and with, with HCD, we've talked. And it's, Anthony's brother of the chamber, but that, the triangle by Jensen's, to do a more of a covered shelter picnic spot there. And something that's just a little more, more dressy for Main Street, more attractive. Not quite to the extent of the pocket park, um, but something a little more inviting for people, maybe even more usable. So planting a big tree, there's probably not the.
No, that's her, I don't think so either. If you put like some sort of zeevo up there.
Right, something like that, yeah.
Um, yeah, it'd work pretty good, but.
So the plan right now by IBW is just to get rid of that pear tree and there'll be some patching or something that would be taking place, most likely.
Probably be just like the one up in front of the Western Frontier where it's your dirt patch.
It's gonna be interesting, you know, Beulah tore out all the trees on Main Street to do their project. And they, I've heard from a couple commissioners, they're putting trees back in. So I'll, I'll talk to them too, to see if they already done that research, to see if they know what kind of tree they'll be doing. Buster, have you heard anything on that?
I haven't heard anything, but just a comment on trees on Main Street. You know, they're nice when they're small. They're not very nice when they get big. No, because they cover up.
Signage and.
The signage and whatever, you know, take the, take the, the tree at the bank coming in from the west, you have a hard time greeting their sign now, because that tree is so high. The signage, you know, they're.
They want theirs across the street cut down, they couldn't read their, their sign.
And I think they're, I think they do add to the ambiance if they don't, if they're not so high. But when they start getting so high, then they're just, you know.
Well, they get a lot of their moisture off the trees. They get a lot of their moisture off the rip line, the branch spread to the tree where the water sheds off. Well, that all sheds onto the pavement, because there's just very little dirt by the base, so I think that's when the roots start coming to the surface. They're looking for any crack in the sidewalk or whatever to get moisture.
I'm not anti-tree, I'm not anti-bird, but you know that tree of IBW, that concrete's a lot more white than it is concrete colored, you know, towards the fall. Birds love that tree, you know, and.
And they were busy last fall picking up fruit off of that tree, and the street was very dirty. And their sidewalk, I know they were, they spent a lot of time picking up the fruit.
Okay, so the plan is to take those two trees down?
Correct, whenever Dave gets time, he's gonna remove them. He felt comfortable that his guys could take care of them themselves.
Is there, on the, by Jensen's, is there a power line or some?
It's a street light sign, but I can trim it off that easily. And if need be, I could get MDU to drop that line.
Okay.
Plus the speaker waders are there too.
Okay, all right.
But that's, MDU is really good at helping with this on that.
So that should be pretty good. Uh, for, I have nothing else on forestry side. We no longer have a forester, again, if you guys haven't heard. So we're looking for another one of them. Uh, the fire department side, we were awful busy in the last month. We had fourteen runs in the last month. Some of them weren't so bad, um, fake alarms, you know, uh, tree dump relighted itself, I guess. One of them was in disregard, because the fire was across the lake when it was fifty mile an hour winds, which is a good thing. Couple motor vehicle accidents. That's, you know, nothing real serious. The incident with a bee truck that tipped over, that was a fun one, semi full of bees, with learning experience there, but.
Don't cover that at fire school?
No, they don't cover that at all. No, no, they have the fear to handle that. Did talk to Tony, I wanna say just over a week ago, asked him update on our pickup. He hasn't got an email back, but he said he was gonna reach out to him. So that would've been, not this past weekend, but the weekend before that. Have you heard anything on that, Jim?
Nope.
Been pretty quiet, um, so he's starting to get a little frustrated, because they're not returning emails. And he did tell me that the county had a couple vehicles on order through them, and they pulled them and went to a different company.
I heard that too.
The sales rep who we started using and what the county used to let, use, left that company. And it sounds like it's been going downhill since then. So told him to keep trying and let us know. Maybe we'll have to pull out a order too, and go someplace else too, because they're not gonna propel it.
Okay, so keep us posted.
Yes, that's all I guess.
Okay.
Jim, do you have anything else?
Thank you. Buster?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Under my report, just wanted to touch that, as, as you saw in Monty's notes. Had a meeting, I had a meeting out at the city shop with the street crew. Dave was there, the entire street crew was there, uh, Monty was there as well, and, uh, I meant it to be half far along, went about an hour, it just got a little. But it was, it was good, there was a lot of discussion being had. We just, uh, wanna make sure everybody's on, on the same page, and things are going the direction we need them to. But one of the things that came out of that discussion, um, from the, the crew is that, you know, we talked just about the, the fact of the garbage truck. And working, driving and, or working behind the garbage truck. You know, and it's, it, it does take a toll on a body, you know, um, and we just, it's not, you know, we just gotta make sure that we're having a good rotation there and that people are doing their, their time. You know, not everybody can drive the garbage truck, not everybody wants to drive the garbage truck. But, um, you know, it does take, it's wear and tear on people. And, you know, one of the things that was brought up is the out of town routes. I'm not sure if Monty did a, an email out to the rest of the cities, how many, how many other cities do garbage runs outside of city limits? Probably none, yeah. You know, would that save us wear and tear on people, trucks, tires, um, time, money? I don't, I don't know, something to consider. I'm sure back in the day, it started with, well, they're heading north up to the landfill, might as well pick up cans on the way up north. And then it just kind of spread out, we, you don't know, we, we head north at, at RDO, up past E Crowes. We go out to the crossroads, we go out to Pat's area where he lives. We go north of the crossroads a little bit, there's, I think, two people north of the crossroads. Uh, one of the other discussions about that was maybe do community dumpsters. You know, maybe we do a dumpster at the archery range, maybe we do a dumpster at, one at the, um, crossroads. I don't know, just discussion. Which I, I, I liked the discussion. Monty did put some pencil to paper and try to do some numbers on what it costs us and what our miles are in time, and it's not huge, I don't think. But I think it's something to consider. It's, it's hard for us to keep employees and find employees. You know, if we keep riding them, like we do, eventually they're not, we're not gonna have people that wanna be behind the garbage truck. If that's the case, how do we, how do we improve on that for, for our workers? I don't know, but I did like the discussions. Something to think about, Buster, you got a thought?
Well, you know, in some of the larger cities, they don't have humans picking it up anymore.
Right, they have the arm.
The arm, yeah. And I don't know how pricey that is or whatever, but that certainly would be a consideration, I would think.
Yeah.
They're, they're probably a bit higher maintenance truck, because of all the moving components on. I know Beulah's had troubles with theirs, just.
They, they.
Nature of the bees, they do have a one-armed bandit yet.
They're both.
Correct, because you're still gonna need both to produce dumpsters, but, you know, I would think it would be beneficial. You need one person to do most of the garbage then. So you could send one person out to do the, the residential stuff. Two people could go out right away in the morning with the other truck and do the dumpsters, and they'd be done probably in a hour, a couple hours, probably, with the dumpsters. And then you have them for the other duties too. And I've seen it before over in Beulah, if the people don't have their dumpster positioned right, they'll just keep driving. Your problem, you know.
Yeah.
Well, you see a lot more communities going to those type, and I'm sure it's due to people not wanting to do manual labor anymore, really.
No, I agree, it's one of those situations where, though, I think next time we buy a garbage truck, we, we need to seriously consider looking at that again. You know, it might be thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars more, I, I have no idea. But it would save.
I think, I think our buggies were, buggies would, would work with that, yes.
Yeah. When, when the city made the change from not going down alleys and having metal garbage cans to the plastic ones, I'm glad I wasn't on the board. But I was living here when that happened. We just moved backwards, lived here about two years before that happened. And there, it was not pretty. Change is hard, and this would be just the same way. But I think it's something we need to consider looking at. We're always looking, trying to think of ways to save a little money somewhere. It might be it, but, you know, a lot of good discussion for that meeting. Monty, um, was there, like I said, and he did record it on video, uh, audio, so if anyone wants to listen to that, you got an hour you want, of your life you wanna waste? Feel, feel free to grab that and listen to it, but it was good. Monty, you think I didn't cover on that, or? All right, moving down the, the, uh, agenda. Nothing under ten correspondence, no old business, no new business. Brings us to thirteen, public comment. James?
Already?
Good timing.
Yeah.
You're up.
A lot of you guys are, hey Darren, how you doing? A lot of you guys know me, uh, I own the lumberyard dump, and just wanted to let you know that there is a cancer forming in Hazen. And I know there's nothing the city commission can do about it, but we have a problem that I think is gonna explode. Um, we have the building going out west of town here, known as Williams Builders. I know the city can't do anything about it, uh, as I've been told, but just so you guys know, none of that material is coming local. Most of the contractors, I'd say ninety percent of them are not local. The problem that we're running into is they're doing these houses as cheap as possible, not getting bids. I, like I said, I own the lumberyard, I have not gotten a bid in the last year and a half to bid any of the material out there. Um, this is all being funded, not funded, but it's being sponsored by HCD. You know, HCD is, they're, they're giving the homeowners an, an incentive. So it's not like they're funding it, sponsoring it, but that's one of the things that they're using as an incentive to sell these houses. And they wanna keep them under budget. And so that they can sell quantity over quality. Um, I did review with Daryl World from Williams Builders. Uh, a few times, we've had quite a few discussions, and some of them got heated. And I haven't spoken to him since this new build started, but there's just certain things. Like, I just got another letter today from Hazen Public Schools to sponsor a, a student and a teacher. Twenty-five bucks, no big deal, you guys know that. They don't give a dime back to this community, nothing, not a thing, it's a cancer. They're gonna start, they're gonna take it over, and it's just not worth it. And I'm just here for public knowledge, to let you guys know, they're not asking, I had a contractor come in today, Low of Cars, most of you guys know. Uh, he runs a gutter, gutter service, he's been here for many years, kids are all homeschooled. He come in today to talk to me about it, because he thought I was bidding materials, and I told him, no. Once again, I, you know, we're not staying local, but they wanted him, he asked me what my professional opinion was on it. As he's buying a hundred dollars worth of screws from me. Mind you, his kid, Taren, purchased Beulah lumber. So not as he, not, I mean, he's supporting local, but he's not even supporting his own kid, which, I mean, it's easier for him. Now, if the lumberyard would shut down, then of course he would have to drive the extra twelve miles to get it, pay a little bit more, this and that. Me and Taren are great friends, we work, I, I help him out a lot, we work on things. His dad is spot, is supporting me, because it's a local business. For the gutter situation, like he said, he's quoting them every time, and every time he's never gotten a call back. So he's asking me, I don't sell gutters, I recommend him for everything. And he wants to know what he can do to get a bid, and I said, I don't know, you pretty much gotta give it away, but they're gonna rake it to the customer. You know, they're gonna go off of the standard industry for gutters, for quoting gutters. But they won't, you know, my whole, I, it's just. But they won't, you know, my whole, I, it's just, I just want you guys aware, and I know there's nothing you guys can do. I, I, there's, you guys got a guy sitting at the table, or two, that have come up to me and bought material for their own personal house. Didn't care what it cost, didn't quote it, said, hey, James, this is what I wanna do, what's your thoughts, drove out there to look at it. Went over there, everything, he said, hey, find me a local contractor. Done deal. He paid me before I even got billed for it. You know, and that's what I'm saying, what I, I just want everybody to know that with Williams out here, it's, I, I think it's great for the community. And I know you guys can't do anything, but at some point, it's, it's getting, last year I lost all the shingling contract because I was at three fifty a square, or I was at, I was quite a bit high. So then I talked to him last year, I said, well, where do I gotta be, he's got, he said, well, you gotta be about three twenty-five to three fifty a square. So I just got it all worked out, sent him a text, three hundred dollars a square of labor and materials, done on site. Still have yet to hear back from him. So I just, you know, I, I need you guys to be aware that, like, all the kids, you guys, a lot of you guys know I sponsor every kid thing, everything that I can. They don't put a dime back in our community, they don't care about our community, there's no way. And when it's all said and done, they're up, they're out, if they get their stuff done, they're up, they're out. The other thing I need you guys to understand is, I can't get that material. If they have shingles blowout, if they have siding blowout, that, if they have a window issue, there is nothing I can do for them, it's cheap shit. I can't, I don't sell oh four oh siding like they do, I quote oh four four, I sell quality, not quantity. They wanna sell quantity of houses, not quality of houses. And, I mean, they can do what they want, and it's up to the homeowner, it's just, you, I just need you guys to understand. Even when the local contractors are coming to me saying, what can I do? You know, we have kids, we, we support in every function. Like, you just pretty much gotta give it away, if you wanna do it, and at that point, you still won't. I'm three hundred dollars a square for labor and materials, I still can't get a text back, a phone call or anything, that's fifty dollars a square less than last summer, and shingles are high. I'm selling those shingles at five percent of what my cost, and, excuse me, yes, I did hire Mexicans from on top. But I did buy the top number of sales this year, sent on May first with seventeen shingle jobs, completed. Not one complaint, these guys are legit, I mean, not, I'm not trying to push them, but, you know, they're licensed, they're bonded, they're insured. Three hundred dollars a square and I still can't get a text back, I can't get a call back, I can't get, I can't sell, why? You guys are city commissioners, that should bother you.
And James, you know it does, because if they don't buy it from you in town, we don't get a sales tax. And that's, we don't wanna see a business die or suffer, and we want, we like to see the sales tax, but you said it seven times. We can't do any, we can't make Daryl at Williams come to you, get a bid.
Yep.
Uh, and, and unfortunately, it's.
I just want you guys aware of it, and like, like I had a, a board member, not from this one, from a different one, he, he, he's actually buying the decking from me for his daughter, picking it up in Bismarck, and his words to screw Bismarck out of that sales tax like we're getting with Williams.
Buster, you have a comment?
Well, just a couple of things. And I'll keep it very short and very simple. And one is, James, you know that you've burned a lot of bridges with Daryl. That's not a very good business management style to use when you're trying to get work.
Did I burn bridges with you? If I burned them with Daryl, we made up, we thought.
Oh, I'm saying.
I don't get to take.
James, 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 let him, let him.
He has given you many opportunities.
No, he hasn't.
To bid in the past, and you have refused to give a bid.
And that's, you know that personally, because we sat in your office going over that shed, Joe, what's his name?
James.
I'm gonna let you guys have this conversation, alright.
I, I'll leave.
James, I appreciate your word, thank you.
Just, just so you guys know, I mean, like I said, it's more of an informative thing, and like I said, they're getting backed by HCD. You know, they get the incentive to build the house, which doesn't come, it goes to the.
The incentive goes to the homeowner.
That's correct.
Not the builder.
But it, it, it is one way of them pushing to sell those houses. Thank you, guys.
You're back. Go ahead.
Well, you know, basically, he's burned many bridges with Daryl in the past, there's no question about it. To the point that he's made Daryl so upset with him that he refuses to go in and even talk to him. And, and that's on those projects, I know people individually that have told me that themselves, that they will never go back.
Well, that's, the, the, this backup though, the, the point which I agree is, well, I don't wanna give my opinions, but we're not getting sales tax, and we're having a, and I've talked to Daryl, I've gone to him face to face, said, please buy in town, can you get stuff from TSC, can you get it from Harborane? I, get it from James, I don't care, try to get it in town, and he is just, his answer is it's more expensive here, the more it costs to build, the more it costs to sell.
But yet on the same token, he's using the local contractor for all this concrete work.
Right.
And, and you know what, I don't know where he goes to get his lumber or his forms and what have you. Uh, he was waiting to get a, he never heard back from the rain gutter situation, so I was told, so.
Well.
Anyway.
So I'd just like to say this one thing about sales tax.
Yeah.
Even if it gets, I guess, even if the material gets, then I guess it dropped off in town here. But what sales tax, it goes here.
Correct.
In town.
If it is delivered.
Point here.
Delivering that night after.
Monty.
Yes, that's correct, and the other thing to keep in mind is that it caps over twenty-five dollars. That's our home rule charter.
Yeah.
You don't pay any more sales tax after twenty-five dollars, so.
Yeah, I'm not so worried about the sales tax, it's keeping these small businesses.
I understand that.
That's more important, Menards ain't hurting the money by any means, you know.
You know, and I guess, I, I don't know if Williams donates or gives back to our community any other way for kids or sponsorship, I don't know that, but. Moving on. Approval of bills.
Motion approved, bills, aye, please.
Motion by Weidrich.
I'll second that.
Second by, uh, discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich, aye. Pillar, aye. Stern, aye. Omenhour, aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Have a good evening.
Evening, Eric.